Okay, call the meeting to order. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for the reasons listed on the closing statement.
So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, we're now in closed session. Okay, call the meeting to order. As we always do, to begin our meetings, we'll begin with a pledge to the flag, and we're honored to have two of our young students here to lead us in that.
Begin when you're ready.
Okay. Come on now, put your hand on your heart. Come on, let's do it.
No, you do it first.
No, you do it.
I do it first. No, you do it first, I'll do the middle, you do it in.
One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job.
Excellent. Well done, well done.
So it's my pleasure to introduce everyone to Noah Nats Vogel and Caroline Smith, who are second graders, is that right, at Fruitland Primary School. And for each one of you, I have a certificate. There you go, Noah and Caroline, and a flag and pencil, showing our appreciation. I know you really had your eye on that candy.
Let's take your picture.
But thank you very much, you did a great job.
Okay, everybody look this way, turn your certificate around so we can see it. And we'll take your picture with Dr. Hanlon. Ready?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. 3.2, approval of the agenda. Mr. Chairman, I move we amend the agenda and make 6.3 adjustments to approve the 2021-2022 Wycomico County Public Schools calendar and move personnel matters to 6.4. Sir, a second to the amendment to the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now approval of the agenda as amended, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's carried. 3.3, moment of silence, we had several of our colleagues and former colleagues pass this past month. Doris Dolly Calcott Burkett worked at Wycomico Middle her entire career. Buddy Gaddis worked at several locations, including Bennett Jr., Middle, Pemberton Elementary, Chipman, Parkside, and James M. Bennett. Margaret Ann Shaheen taught second, third, and sixth grade for many years. Richard Jeffrey Holloway worked for us from '81 to '93, taught English, Science, and Language Arts, and then made a career change to become a bus contractor. Cheryl Brown has worked at the Central Office, Choices, Wycomico Middle, Prince Street, Glen Avenue, Pittsfield, East Salisbury, and Willards. Let's take a moment of silence to remember these fine people. Thank you. 3.4, student representatives to the board, reports. So Ava Batista, Wycomico High School. Oh no, I didn't know what Georgia you were going in, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ava Batista, and I am pleased to have your attention at this meeting to share some of Wyhigh's latest events and achievements. Our staff has worked extra hard this fall season to help our students succeed in and outside of the classroom. On October 20th, Wyhigh students wore orange for National Unity Day to represent acceptance and inclusion in our community. This was an initiative taken to support anti-bullying within our school and encourage students to show kindness to one another. MCA Sea Week was held from October 25th to the 29th to help seniors in the busy college application process. Activities included in this week were FAFSA information sessions for students and parents, onsite admissions from UMES, and college casual days for staff to support their college gear. We are holding onsite admissions for SU this week as well. Some Wyhigh students who have already shown promise in this exciting process are Sophia Petito, Robert Schaller, and Praise Mayor. All of these aforementioned bright young scholars were named as Quest Bridge finalists. They are one step closer to achieving a full ride to top nations in our, to top schools in the nation. Wyhigh has also been cheering on our sports teams as they end the regular season and head into playoffs. Our volleyball and soccer teams both entered playoffs, and cross-country went into regionals. Soccer season ended at playoffs with a score of 1 to 0 against Queen Anne's. Our tribe marching band also attended their last competition at Towson University on October 23rd, where they were awarded best musical performance. For the sports continuing their season, our unified tennis team is entering states at College Park tomorrow. And football won their first playoffs game, the first time in 10 years. Blue Crew and SGA organized a glow-out where the crowd was wearing all black and were handed glow sticks to light up the bleachers. Due to their win against Easton High, our football team gets to play again at another home game this Friday against Stevie Decatur at 6:00 PM. We're going old-school and rubbing our Wyhigh colors with a familiar blue and gold theme. Many students are getting excited for our winter sports, which begin on November 15th and will include basketball, wrestling, indoor track, unified strength and conditioning, and winter cheerleading. In support of our football teams, the NHS has been helping out, the PTA run concessions at every game. The National Honor Society will also resume the Autism Project this Friday to assist with creating materials for teachers within our county to use with their students. Additionally, Wyhigh has joined the National Association for Music Education and held their first interest meeting for National Music Honor Society just yesterday over Zoom. Its goal is to recognize students who go above and beyond academically and musically. Requirements include being enrolled in a school music ensemble for at least one semester, having an A in that course, an overall 3.0 GPA, and a vocal or instrumental performance at the first meeting. Our SGA has been very busy as well. At our Crucial Catch game, we made $300 from selling baked goods alone, and hot chocolate, although the game was at 12:00 PM with a high of 71 degrees. And overall, we raised over $1,000 to donate to a local breast cancer charity from the bake sale, along with our student-designed Crucial Catch merchandise. Wyhigh is also hosting our annual Fall Blood Drive, which is especially important due to the Eastern Shore blood shortage. Our SGA will be hosting this event on November 23rd in the auditorium lobby, where students and staff will be invited to donate their blood. Thank you for listening, and I look forward to our next meeting.
Thank you for your report. From James M. Bennett High School, Hannah Kim.
Good afternoon, super-
Is this one? Is it on? Oh, sorry. Good afternoon Superintendent Dr. Hanlon and Board members. I'm delighted to be here to share about Bennett this month. Prior to the end of October, we had a college application week to aid seniors in their college application process. Following the Help Week at the end of October, our staff had a costume contest judged by our SGA. Staff dressed as Zoom teachers, transformers, characters from the office, referees, and more. The winners of the contest were the social workers who dressed up as characters from Hocus Pocus. Starting November, the blood brink came to our school last Friday, and we had many students and staff give blood. We were glad to give back to the community. Students have not only been busy in school, but also out of school. Our marching band participated in the regional competition held at Severna Park this past Saturday and received their highest score this year. The band's percussion was one first in the state two weeks ago at a competition held at Towson University. The fall season has ended for most sports, but few still remain competing for state titles. Our boys soccer team won the regional championship and are competing to go to final, state finals, and a state semifinal game this upcoming Saturday. Along with the semifinal soccer game, the 3A boys state championship for cross-country is also being held this Saturday. Two of our students, Timmy Sinowick and Billy Joinville, have qualified and will be representing us in a race for the state champion. Class officers have been brainstorming fundraising ideas and events for our students, and a committee of members are planning a 5K run around our school. We plan to get runners in our community involved and to use it as a fundraiser for future events to come. We are looking forward to events and activities, and I look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Do we have somebody from Mardele High School? I didn't have a name in my agenda. About Parkside High School, no. Okay? That's the end of-
Thank you, ladies.
-student reports.
Um, I just want to apologize to the Board members for a second. They told me this morning that I had to fill in for Cassidy Cashman, and they told me the wrong time, and I am very sorry.
So you're Audrey Giannelli?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you for being here, don't worry about that.
Thank you. Okay, so yes, I am Audrey Giannelli. I'm SGA's Communications Officer, filling in for Cassidy Cashman, and she regretfully cannot make it today. Yesterday was our virtual learning day to kick off the second quarter. It went very smoothly, so we are very excited to see what second quarter brings based on what we saw yesterday with our students. And we ended our first quarter with our Maryland College Application Campaign Week, having several special guests and college representatives come in and speak about college and career with interested students. This past weekend, our marching rams ended their season at the regional competition in Severna Park, and they were able to score second place in the class preliminaries and fifth in the overall finals. Also, our fall sports are doing very well. Both boys and girls soccer teams became regional champions, and the boys moving into, the boys are moving into the state semifinals this Saturday. We look forward to the second quarter, and we will do, continue to do well in every aspect we can, so thank you Board members for this platform, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. 3.5, public comments. This evening, we have 14 people that have signed up for public comment. The first one I have is Dawn Turner. The next one I have is Fred Conley. Good evening, Mr. Conley.
Good evening, Chairman Malone.
I'll add two seconds on the T. I'm not gonna do that T, I thought that's what you were looking at. I thought he's already mad because I took two seconds off, I'll add it.
I am not mad.
Well, a little levity never hurts, right?
That's right. Good evening Chairman Malone, Vice Chairman Murray, Superintendent Hanlon, and our fellow Board members. I'm here tonight, I'm putting my glass, sorry, here tonight to talk about none other than my block-
We can hear you, but then it can't be recorded, so.
Good evening, I'm here tonight to talk about block scheduling once again. You know, May 11th, Mr. Briggs adopted it as be a quote benefit to our students. Tonight, I want to give you my analysis of the block scheduling of a sophomore and senior at Bennett. Let's talk about the flex period first. Flex period at Bennett is for band, chorus, or TVO studio only. There are no other options for flex. My daughter asked for a non-credit art class instead of the study hall, it doesn't exist. There are no no. Absolutely no PBIS lessons, no announcements, no social emotional lessons, no talks at all, as stated in the May 11th meeting to you Board members. Health and gym are a half semester class. So for the first term, both of my students had an 80-minute study hall and a 45-minute flex period. That's two hours a day that they're sitting in the school with nothing to do. My students are unable to do homework in study hall because their homework's heavy classes are in the afternoon. I'd asked my senior to work on her college essays, her quote to me was, "The study hall was too disruptive to write essays." They're not good classes. My experience, grades were done Friday. Our experience, grades have gone down. SAT scores have gone down. Our AP student refuses to take the AP test because she's afraid that that goes on her record. She's finishing her class this semester, she won't take the A-2 class until the end of the school year. So we might be right that AP test scores don't go down because students are simply refusing to take the test. We were also told that discipline would go down. I think we all know from the circumstances at Bennett, discipline has not gone down. My sophomore has been in the cafeteria for the second time in her career and experienced pepper spray by the Wycomico County Sheriff's Department. I'm 53 years old, I've never experienced pepper spray. My 15-year-old has experienced pepper spray now in two schools. I don't think discipline has improved. The men's bathrooms are so destroyed that they're locked. I don't know if anybody saw the videos of the young man that had a problem. That's not lack of discipline. Okay, we, you've got out of control, you know, it's not. Block scheduling has not accrued that. Board member Sathowski, you asked administration to poll all parents. Did they grant your request, or did they ignore you, just like they did the rest of us? I'll tell you that as, my wife and I as parents, were never polled on this block scheduling. What, I will say-
You can finish.
I will say, our schedules were a nightmare getting our kids into school. The sophomore required me to take a vacation day to sit down with the principal and come up with an acceptable schedule. Both students' final schedules fell far short of optimal. Mr. Malone, you said we'll have to give it a year, see if it works. Superintendent Hanlon, you said the same thing. It's not working. You've experimented with my children's, over 50% of my children's high school curriculum. You are failing these students. That's just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Edward Lee. Mr. Edward Lee.
Please stand up.
Okay, thank you.
I think this might be his.
Whenever you're ready. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good evening. I'm here this evening to bring some positive news development regarding financial literacy, which I, you may have already received, but I wanted to come in person to speak to you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, of the reality that in the next year or two years, the university, Salisbury University, is going to require financial literacy for freshman students. That bodes well, not only for the university, but what it means to this county and will possibly mean to our students here in Wycomico County. I have met with Dr. Cassay, who has spent eight years at the university to move financial literacy at the university to where it is headed today. I would, Mr. Chairman, I would hope that, as it may appear, that we do not remain stuck in the tradition of how educational matters are handled. I have heard repeatedly in this journey that education, the education system does not want to be told what to do. I want to dispel that myth. We're not telling the university, or the Board, or anyone else what to do. We are sharing from a community perspective the need for financial literacy for our students in this system. I want to make myself available to you, Mr. Chairman, and members, and that's why I came here tonight. I, I, I had to make a decision whether or not to even come or not. I want to help. My committee wants to help, and we feel that we're being locked out and have been. I'm following Dr. Hanlon's advice, I have been in contact with the lead person that she asked me to be in contact with, and I'm going to leave that to see how that unfolds. But this night, this visit is to you, Mr. Chairman, and to you, the members of the Board. What's happening at SU, that will impact what's happening to our children here in Wycomico County. That opens a door for them-
30 seconds.
Opens a door for them that through Dr. Cassay, he wants to develop some programs and interactions that lead our students from high school here through matriculate into the university. And I just hope and pray, and pray, that you will feel my spirit, know that I'm not here to do anyone any harm, but I and my committee want to work with you, that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you, sir. How about Karen Abbott? Karen Abbott? How about Joan Smith?
She's on record.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
Greetings.
Okay, that was a quick, don't start my time yet, please. I waited so patiently, and now I can't get it out. All right. Wycomico County Education Association, WCEA, has asked WCS, Wycomico County Public Schools, senior leaders to work with WCEA, including educators, staff, and community stakeholders in planning the crucial work of allocation of the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds for reopening our schools. The Department of Education requires that, quote, "educators and their unions should be an essential component of the process. Collaboration with and reliance upon the expertise and invaluable perspective of educators who serve our students is essential to effective planning." Posted on the WCBOA website is a listing of expenditures and email address for comments. However, you have not sought engagement and participation to craft a plan for the funding. Our children, educators, and staff are suffering the effects of COVID-19. While bodies may be immunized and the physical environment somewhat mitigated, there has been no preparation for the return to our schools. Students have not been transitioned into the structure of our schools, the rigor of our lessons, and the requirements of classroom routines. The trauma faced by students, educators, and staff is real. It's intense. It's the root cause of our system unraveling, and it's creating situations that threaten the safety and health of students, educators, and staff in our schools. It's critical that the needs, programs, and services that will address the traumatic impact of COVID-19 on our children and in our schools are prioritized and include effective methods to address COVID opportunity gaps and disrupted instruction, continued mitigation strategies for safe in-person learning, and measures that must be taken now and be continued to retain a highly qualified workforce for our children. As an organization representing educators and staff who have been on the front lines throughout this crisis, and on behalf of the students we serve, WCEA requires inclusion in the planning and oversight of ESER funding, including bargaining committees-
30 seconds.
...opportunities for advanced review and comment on draft plans, implementation, and continued oversight. The voice of teachers and staff is essential to building trust and ensuring the best possible prudent allocation and use of resources with the highest degree of support for students, educators, and staff. Not bad.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Take care. Just give me the thumbs up if they're- Okay, and then one of you tell me if they're- The next one is Jana Hobbs. How about Nicole Ackley? What, wait a minute?
Mr. Duck, was his name?
Yes, but I haven't gotten to him yet. How about Nicole Ackley? Andrew Hayde. Well, let's do Mr. Bill Duck, since he's standing right there in the lobby. Thank you, welcome, sir.
Hi, I'm Bill Duck, 27-year employee of the Board of Education, 20, 28-year, 27 of which were spent in classrooms. I just wanted to give my sincere thanks to the Board of Ed and your continuing commitment to keeping our schools and staff and students safe. As studies that were released by the CDC in September have shown, the use of masks in areas where local community spread has shown the need reduces not only the likelihood of a virus outbreak, but also reduces the number of pediatric cases that end up being hospitalized. I greatly look forward to the day when you can take the vote to confirm the state's decision to end any mask requirement. I have a feeling it's going to be coming rather soon, but I applaud your effort to work with our medical community and listen to those scientists and medical community who are offering the advice and continuing to keep us safe, and I can't wait to get rid of these two. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No.
I'm on, need a minute, I just had a door slammed on me. I'm not very pleased with the situation outside, it is 50-some degrees. This is supposed to be an open meeting, at the very least, the TV set could have been taken outside so we could see. I really, we know that this is an issue, I don't, we've had it up Wyhigh before with no problem, and now it's escalating because no one wants to use Wyhigh, I don't understand that. All right, but I did get through the door in one piece, so I'm grateful for that. All right. All right. I have heard Dr. Hanlon say in this very room, "Virtual instruction is not ideal for the vast majority of students." Then why have a half virtual day on Monday? Dr. Hanlon replied to me in email, and I quote, "With all students now having access to technology, this approach was created and approved to improve efficiency for both parents and staff. We heard parents say that it's easier to schedule childcare for full day than half-day. Staff time for professional development and records management will be increased because dismissal process and transportation logistics will not be part of the day." End quote. Do you know what she did not say? Anything about what's best for student learning. She said students have access to technology, except they didn't. The plan didn't change to pass out hotspots until after I informed her that the schools were not going to pass them out. Just give paper packets. Have you guys heard of the digital divide? It is a huge problem in Wycomico County. But do you care? Let's talk about those hotspots and internet access. How many of us have unstable internet? A lot, actually. How many of us have unstable internet once we put all of our kids on Zoom at the same time? How many kids were doing Zoom on cell phones because that's the best way they could access class, given the technology and the know-how they and their parents had? Is the virtual day what's best for those students? Moving on. What about our special education population? What was this virtual day good for them? Did they receive the same quality of services they would have gotten in the classroom? In 2020, we had 1,624 special education students in the county. Did we do what's best for those students? Or do we not care about them either? What about our homeless population? I can almost promise you they didn't learn anything on Monday. But hey, we don't care about those 604 students. What about the 9,334 students who qualify for free breakfast and lunch? It was only after my emails that parents were notified that bag lunches would be available, lunches, not breakfast. But that's only if the parents could get transportation to pick them up. What about our 44 school counselors and all the students they serve? Do we not care that none of those students got services that day? Forty-four school members, school counselors, were not able to serve their students.
It's time.
Can I end with one last sentence?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I know several board members here enjoy a good quote, so I like to end with a quote. Wycomico County, and I quote from our mission statement, "Wycomico County Board of Education and Wycomico County Public Schools are committed to providing the best education possible for all students." When are we going to start doing that?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who participated in public comment. We always appreciate the comments from the public, and we'll take all those thoughts under advisement and get back to folks where it's necessary. That concludes public comments, 3.6 Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hanlon.
A few things, Mr. Malone. The first item, I just want to begin with an important message to our school community, students, and parents and staff, and that is that ensuring the safety of all students is our highest priority. Earlier today, we received a report that a James M. Bennett High School student was possibly in possession of a firearm on school property. Administrators, law enforcement, and our school safety team took immediate action. The school status was moved to safe in place. The student was identified, apprehended, removed from school property, and the weapon was confiscated. The investigation is ongoing. And as per board policy, any student who brings a weapon on school property or to a school-sponsored event will face serious action. Providing a safe and secure learning environment is a top priority for Wycomico County Public Schools, and we take any violations of that policy very seriously. Security measures and protocols are in place to help us maintain safe school communities across our school district. I especially want to thank those parents and students who provided us with the information necessary to investigate and bring swift closure to this incident. Please continue to encourage your children to let a teacher or administrator know if a situation exists that could ever place him or her or others in danger. Please remind your child, if you see something, say something. It's only by working together that we can create and maintain the level of safety that we want for our children. Next, I'm going to address, make some comments that we will get to further in the agenda, but I just wanted to lay the groundwork for a couple of agenda items, as I said. One of our four strategic priorities in ACHIEVE has been to recruit and retain a high-performing workforce. Never has this priority been so important. Across the country, educators are leaving the workforce because of stress and burnout. There are shortages...
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry about that. Sure how that happened? I must have touched something. Across the country, educators are leaving the workforce because of stress and burnout, and there are shortages in all employee groups from bus drivers, substitutes, custodians, paraprofessionals, and the teacher candidate pool is almost nonexistent. We can't ignore this phenomenon. While words of encouragement are always helpful, we must address this issue with tangible measures to address the burnout and to show our employees that we value them and we care about their mental health and well-being. The leadership team has spent considerable time thinking about how we can do just that. And at this point, I'm recommending two measures for your consideration on the agenda, and then sharing one additional measure for your information. First, we must begin to address the substitute shortage. With a fill rate of 39% daily on average, many classes are not covered by substitutes, and administrators are forced to ask paraprofessionals and teachers to cover for their colleagues. This phenomenon leads to increased burnout and more teachers taking time off. You can see the snowball that this creates and the hardship that it puts on our employee groups each day. Therefore, I'm recommending several measures for... to address the substitute issue, including a pay increase for substitutes across the board, the assignment of willing substitutes to dedicated schools where they will earn long-term pay, full reimbursement of all onboarding fees after the first month of satisfactory work, payment for work on professional development days to long-term substitutes, and the expansion of recruitment at our institutes of higher ed, and the waiving of credit requirements for students pursuing a teaching career. Therefore, under the consent item on the agenda this evening, I'm asking the board to approve an increase in pay for substitute teachers. That's the first item. Next, I'm recommending to the board that we adjust the school calendar for this year to include an early dismissal day each month, beginning November 23rd and continuing through May. These days would involve in-person instruction in the morning with a midday dismissal for students. Teachers and staff would utilize the afternoon for planning and other mental health activities. We fully recognize that this change in the calendar could result in challenges for some parents who will need to find additional childcare. However, we ask for parents' understanding as we ensure that our staff is able to best meet the needs of our children through a focus on their mental health. Our staff needs our understanding and patience now more than ever after 20 of the most challenging months in the history of public education. They need this support to in turn support our children, their, your children, in our schools. And finally, while it doesn't require board action, I am announcing this evening that our school system will be closed for the three days that had previously been workdays for administrators, December 27th through 29th, between Christmas and New Year's Day. And the three workdays for administrators leading up to the holiday when students and teachers are not in our buildings, that's December 20th through 22nd, that administrators will be permitted to work from alternative locations. To our staff, we hear you. These measures are just some of what we're considering. And we will continue to consider ways, along with the board, to provide all employees with tangible measures to recognize your needs and to demonstrate how we value your contributions to our system during these very stressful times. So I appreciate the board's willingness to consider those items on the agenda this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stoffer for an update for the board. It's very important that we begin to wrap our heads around what's happening with the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. So he's going to begin this evening with a general update just to get you thinking about where we need to be focused.
Well, thank you, Dr. Hanlon, and good evening, Chairman Malone, Vice Chairman Murray, and board members. We're going to pivot over to Maryland's Blueprint for a Brighter Future. I want to provide you with an update on where we are with the blueprint at the state level. Today, there have been, to date, three state-level Blueprint Coordinator meetings. In addition, there have also been a few other departmentalized state-level meetings for HR directors, CFOs, and pre-K supervisors, among a few. And for WCPS, we have also had a number of smaller group blueprint discussion meetings internally here as well. And please remember, as the coordinator for Blueprint, I get to work with a really tremendously talented group of individuals. My job really is to coordinate their efforts. They're all experts in each of the areas that we're going to discuss briefly here tonight. So as we look at this slide, I want to just take a few minutes to review some background with you and along with the policy areas of Blueprint. In addition, we'll discuss the Blueprint process for creating the implementation plan, and then I'll talk briefly about next steps regarding timelines. As we look at the background regarding this, some of this will be reviewed for you, and I hope it is. And then it'll take you a little bit further in your knowledge. But the Commission on Excellence and Innovation in Education, or as it's better known, the Kerwin Commission, was chaired by Brett Kerwin, and they started their work in 2016. And they utilized the National Center on Education and the Economy. They just didn't make it up, but they utilized a national organization, or NCEE, to guide part of the work that they did. A few of us were at the Maryland Negotiation Service, or MNS, conference last week, and Dr. Kerwin was the featured speaker there. And he described the process for the early Kerwin Commission meetings several years ago. And he said the overarching theme of the Commission meetings always started with, "The best school systems in the world have..." dot, dot, dot. And then they would work to fill in the rest of that sentence at each one of their meetings. So here you can see how the Blueprint legislation evolved over the last couple of years. The Kerwin Commission completed their work in 2019. Legislation was passed, but then vetoed by Governor Hogan a year later. But then that was overwritten in a final version. And now we have this Blueprint 2.0 version, which contains changes that are regarding the timeline differences because it was a year later, and also the impacts of COVID on student learning across the state. So really, the Blueprint that we have now is the original with those additions regarding both the changes in the timeline for implementation and the impact that COVID and that time had on student learning. This should look a little bit familiar to you. From the time that the Kerwin Commission came out with the preliminary report in 2018 until now, some of the Blueprint initiatives have really already started to be addressed through the addition of state grants on top of the normal state education funding formula. So you can see those types of grants here, and they should be familiar to you as you look across those boxes. That is funding that we've already started to receive that will, once Blueprint, as it goes into effect over these next 10 years, those boxes will be incorporated right into the new funding formula for states as they provide that funding for local districts. So this are... These are the five main pillars or policy areas of Blueprint. Early childhood education, high-quality teachers and leaders, college and career readiness, the necessary resources needed to help all students be successful in an equitable manner, and finally, accountability for school systems. And that's what I want to start with briefly, is to discuss the governance and accountability first. The Blueprint legislation does create an oversight board for these policy areas, and they have a pretty broad-reaching authority over the local districts as well as the state. And so back to that phrase that I started with that had dot, dot, dot halfway through. The Kerwin Commission's work says that the best school systems in the world are... ...dot, dot, dot accountable to everyone for student learning and performance. So that's what guided the work regarding governance and accountability to put Maryland at the top. The charge of the Oversight Board, the Accountability and Implementation Board, or AIB as it's called, is that they are to develop a comprehensive 10-year plan that will be used to guide Maryland's school systems in implementing the policy areas of Blueprint, those five pillars that I just mentioned. As an independent unit of state government, the AIB is the final authority on all things Blueprint-related. They are a separate entity from MSDE. So that must be understood. One major area of accountability is funding. In the legislation, the AIB has the authority, and they will withhold 25% of all new state funds towards local education systems. So at first, that 25% of new funding will be withheld until each local school system's implementation plan has been approved by the AIB. Once that's been approved, later years, the new state funding will... 25% of that will be withheld and will be released as performance measures, student learning performance measures are met. So this information you most likely have seen or heard before. So for the next few slides, again, it's important to remember that description from Dr. Kerwin and how they guided the Commission's work, that dot, dot, dot phrase again. So for this one, this slide, we can say, "The best school systems in the world have universal pre-K, and these systems believe in educating their children from the earliest ages." That statement has guided the Blueprint work on pre-kindergarten. That's the belief from that Commission that has moved into legislation. This slide, "The best school systems in the world hold teachers in high regard just as they do lawyers, engineers, and business professionals. And because they hold them in high regard, they pay them and they train them as such." So to do this, Blueprint institutes a career ladder that incentivizes teachers to stay in a classroom position but continue to take on more school-level leadership with student learning. This is an excerpt from the legislation related to teacher career ladder and pay. All of the items on this slide are what the AIB will need to confirm, define, and publish in their initial plan as they begin to meet over this year. But some areas to note, our current starting salary for teachers right now is a little over $48,000 a year. So as you can see there from that second sentence, starting teacher salary must be $60,000 by year 2026. So we have a ways to go before we get to that level. So that's some of the work that we have ahead of us. National Board Certified Teachers are also strongly preferred in the Blueprint legislation. So as we move forward, we have to define what the teacher career ladder is and what it looks like. Dr. Pavick and Mr. Reed are nearby listening, so I want to say it's also important to know that everything here is subject to collective bargaining, negotiations... that everything here is subject to collective bargaining, negotiations. They've also been very involved through MNS in their CFO meetings and our own preliminary meetings on these topics. So this will become more and more prevalent as we move forward. Our next statement, "The best school systems in the world have real college and real career-ready standards to get as many students as possible ready for the next step in life." So from this slide, you can see in Maryland, and certainly in Wycomico, feel like we have outstanding opportunities for students as it relates to advanced placement courses, dual enrollment, and CTE. That's been a part of our county and our learning for students for a long time. That's a part of this legislation. So the local Blueprint implementation plan will communicate these opportunities and put timelines with them as we move forward to identify students and make sure that they are in the appropriate pathway. One area also to note here is that, as you look at it, I think CTE, we have probably the best CTE program in the state of Maryland, and that will be highlighted in the Blueprint legislation. I think that will only be another feather in our cap as we move forward with Blueprint. But it is important to note that CTE will no longer fall under MSD-E, but it will instead align with the Governor's Workforce Development Board that has oversight from the AIB. So this is another change that we'll have to accommodate and also plan for as we move forward with Blueprint. As we look at this slide, the dot, dot, dot statement would be, "The best school systems in the world appropriately and adequately fund education between school systems and a state. They appropriately and equitably fund schools in a school system, and they appropriately and equitably fund students and student populations within a school." So equitable services for all students as it relates to academics, social and emotional well-being, and educational opportunities, and et cetera. That will be an important part of this pillar as we move forward with Blueprint. So just to finalize this, the last few slides are specifically about the approach that WCPS is preparing for as the AIB moves forward this year. WCPS will have a steering committee that will potentially serve as a coordinating team for the policy areas. The steering committee can also provide governance and accountability relating to those areas, as well as solicit feedback from stakeholders during the local plan and writing process. It will... The steering committee will help coordinate all of these efforts over the next 10 years as we move forward with the Blueprint. And as we receive that plan from initially the AIB, and then as we start to create our own plan locally, all of these areas will be important as we structure how we're going to do that. The steering committee will help to guide that work. Then as we look at plan development, we'll also have work groups for each of the policy areas that will have our experts. As you remember, I said earlier, I'm the Blueprint Coordinator. I have the joy of coordinating all of the experts within our local school system around these given topics. And I do think that it will be important to rely on all those experts as we move forward. So we'll have individual work groups that our steering committees will be guiding the work for these work groups. We'll also have opportunities for stakeholder input that will be very important as we move forward in developing our own local plan that the AIB will be... that we'll be submitting to the AIB. And then last but not least, this is a key slide. This is the timeline. The next steps are that the AIB are supposed to develop a state implementation plan by February 15, 2022. By April 1 of 2022, MSD-E is supposed to develop criteria from the AIB plan that can be used to approve or not approve the local Blueprint implementation plans. And then local boards of education must then submit to the AIB their local Blueprint or implementation plan by June 15 for approval. I will say that at our MNS Conference last week, Dr. Kerwin said this past Thursday that a day prior... so earlier that week, he just received the official notification that he would be one of the seven members of the AIB. So he went on to say that he didn't see how that board could possibly develop a state plan on this broad and far-reaching topic by February 15, coming up in just a few months, when they haven't even had their first meeting yet. So I think he was leading us into and kind of predicting that there may need to be some changes as we move forward with the timelines around the Blueprint in Maryland. But obviously, he did say this is extremely important work, and the message that I was hearing is if the AIB felt like they need to take their time and get it right, then they will do that, and that they will recommend to our legislators that timelines need to be adjusted in the legislation and with Blueprint as it moves forward. But I think in the meantime, what we'll be doing as WCPS, we'll be making sure that information is shared, that all those that are attending these state-level meetings are working together and sharing information with each other. We'll be putting these structures in place, the steering committee and the work groups, and making sure that everyone understands what their roles will be so that whenever those plans do come down from the state, the AIB, that we'll be ready to jump in at that point in time and quickly move forward with our own work locally on what we have to do and who we have to involve to develop our own local implementation plans.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffer. We appreciate the report tonight and appreciate your coordinating the work of this major piece of legislation that really has the potential to change public education moving forward. Yes, ma'am?
I want to thank Dr. Stoffer for that report. And I'm looking at the timeline. Will he be informing us, I hope, each month about each of the events on the timeline?
I will definitely be keeping board members updated, and certainly, as Dr. Hanlon sees that we will need to as we move forward, we'll also be updating within our local system as well, between our executive leadership team, our senior leadership teams, so that... Again, I think the most important thing that we can do now is communicate, because we don't want to go too far one direction or the other, because the Accountability and Implementation Board still has a lot of work ahead of them. MSD-E then has to develop the criteria for the local implementation plans based on that work that they then communicate with each local school district. And from that, we develop our own local implementation plan. So there's still a lot to be done and a lot to be defined. But I think the most important thing at this point in time is to keep all of the stakeholders in communication with one another and to have the structures in place so that we can get working as soon as we know what it is we have to do.
Thank you, and this has been very clearly explained. And I hope that the parents and community people who are watching the board meeting, I think this has been a very good explanation for them.
At the risk of thinking that I missed something or I should have read something, do we have this presentation somewhere? Can we get that?
We'll have it.
We will have it. So I didn't miss it, then?
No, you didn't miss it.
Okay, good.
You're finalizing it this afternoon.
I thought you were going to say, "I sent it in an update. Don't you read my updates?"
No, no, you're fine. We will get it.
No, because I agree with Mr. Thoussky. It's very informative. It'd be nice to have that. Thank you. Very well done.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley.
Other questions or comments on that? Okay. Mr. Butler, turn it over to you for our Extra Mile Awards.
Okay. Let's go ahead and start with our Extra Mile Award. We got three very deserving award winners. And we're going to start with Mr. Jerry Siple. If you'll come on down, really appreciate it. Let me tell you all something about Mr. Siple. Come on down, sir. And Mrs. Bratton, you can come on down as well. Mrs. Bratton is the principal at Evening High School. So let me tell you why Jerry Siple is our Extra Mile Award winner for the month of October. He was recently promoted to Building Service Manager of Shoemaker Complex. Now, on his first day, he was clearly eager to improve the facility. Having already identified needs and having taken care of some, you could hear him outline those items to his supervisor. In the days to follow, you could see he was making the facility a better place to be and actually carrying out what he said he was going to do. Jerry was witness doing things like cutting overgrown grass from the sidewalk, picking up and stacking fallen limbs over at the Resource Center, all jobs that are tasked of others, but proof Jerry is always willing to go the extra mile to make the environment better over at the Shoemaker Complex. Jerry is truly a dedicated employee and does things of his own initiative to make Wycomico County Public Schools a better place, and that's why he's one of our October Extra Mile Award winners. So can we give him an applause? Round of applause. So Dr. Hanlon and Chairman Malone are going to present this to you. Let me... Wrong one. There we go. You get a certificate, and... I'll make sure to give you the one with the right name, right? We want to do that. There we go. And that is yours as well. And we're going to get your picture taken with Dr. Hanlon and Mrs. Bratton and Chairman Malone. Bobby, you want to come in? Come on down. Once again, congratulations and thanks for all you do for Wycomico County Public Schools. Rachel Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, will you come in? Come on down, Ms. Sullivan. And Ms. Bascharan, you can come down as well. So Rachel Sullivan is an eighth-grade teacher at Bennett Middle School. Now, in a time, as we know, when teachers and students are struggling to work through the current school climate post-COVID, Ms. Sullivan has done a lot to boost morale and support teachers. Rachel asked students to write teacher shout-outs in which students shared compliments towards their teachers and had a positive effect on Bennett Middle coworkers. Rachel has also put together an informal group that meditates at the beginning of the day before school starts, and it's put a lot of teachers in a better headspace when greeting their students first thing in the morning. Rachel does these things without a second thought because of who she is and the kindness that she carries throughout the building. So let's give a big hand to Rachel Sullivan of Bennett Middle School, an October Extra Mile Award winner. All right. Thank you, Rachel, and congratulations on being an October Extra Mile Award winner. Mr. White? Come on down. This is yours, and you can put this in your office, too. Okay. So let me tell you about Brian White. Wycomico Public Schools, as you all know, has outstanding athletic trainers. And Brian White is certainly one that goes above and beyond every single day. Now, one parent recently wrote that Coach White, as he is known around Wy High, went above and beyond to make sure her daughter got the best care after a traumatic injury in October. He was quick to make sure she was comfortable and notified the parent right away. But what struck the parent was what Coach White did next. On his own, he contacted a local rehab facility, got the daughter an appointment, and even set up an in-person meeting after hours with a local surgeon to discuss options for her daughter's future as a student athlete. Now, Coach White is also willing to do things outside of his job duties, including joining staff to deliver computers and get paperwork signed when it's needed. He even does the laundry for all of Wy High's athletic teams. Good man, good man. We have great trainers in this county, and Brian White is among the best, and how he truly cares for each and every student athlete. Coach White certainly deserving of the October Extra Mile Award. Congratulations. Let's give Coach White a big hand. Brian, by the way, is accompanied by Principal Ron Green from Wy High. All right, thank you very much. Congratulations, Coach White, October Extra Mile Award winner. Dr. Hanlon, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Always a highlight of the board meeting to recognize our employees who go the extra mile. Many, many do, and it's our pleasure to recognize those individuals. So the little, last little brief thing is the grants report.
Right.
Dr. Briggs?
Be short and sweet, I promise. Pleased to be able to share some information from our October Grants Report. This past month, we received funding from five grants totaling approximately $212,000. Three of the grants were from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, one to support some of Glen Avenue's students in need, one to provide music therapy for students in the Judy Center catchment area, and one to support Beaver Run students in enhancing the availability of books in their homes. We also received a grant from the Maryland Center for School Safety to help provide contractual hours for SROs to cover a variety of after-school programs and events. And we are thankful for a grant from MSD-E to help support our excellent fine arts program. Additionally, in October, we submitted application for another nine grants, and I look forward to updating everyone on their status at an upcoming board meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hanlon. 4.1, approval of the last open session minutes from the meeting of October 12. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's carried. Okay, the consent items, which are from 5.1 to 5.14 and 5.15, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Got a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carried. 6.1. At the meeting... At the October meeting of the Curriculum Council, a suite of textbooks for use in high school business education courses was presented. The suite includes books for accounting, marketing, business administration, and Microsoft Word and Excel programs. The books receive unanimous support from council members and a recommendation that they move forward to the Board of Education for consideration. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent is there a motion to approve the Cengage Suite of Business Education Textbooks for First Reading? Got a motion. Mr. Fitzgerald, is there a second? Is there any discussion? I know Mr... I don't see Mr. Ashby, but is there any? Oh, Mr. Brady's here. All right. Then continuing the baseball theme, you're at the plate.
Thank you very much. Chairman Malone, Vice Chair Murray, board members, thank you for having me here tonight. Mr. Ashby is dealing with... Mr. Ashby is dealing with death in his family, so...
I'm sorry.
We are all praying for him, and we'll just follow through and do the best we can here. So we are here to share with you a suite from Cengage of textbooks that are being brought forth that'll bring coherence across our various business classes. So what we have here is... Well, I'll just, I'll read what he put in. The textbooks will be used within the high school's business education departments in need of periodic replacement. So we have some textbooks that are seven to 10 years old right now. A large-scale review was done with students, parents, teachers, and post-secondary faculty. They reviewed the five textbooks that will be utilized in one of the three business education pathways. Those pathways include accounting, business administrative services, and marketing. Each of these texts will be utilized with the same instructional platform, and they both have online and the textbook option. So there are two versions there. And the good news for you is that the federal Perkins Funds were applied for and granted, which allowed us to purchase these upgraded textbooks in our four county high schools.
Any questions for Mr. Brady?
I'm on the curriculum committee, and I heard Mr. Ashby's report, and I think these books are badly needed.
I was also on the, I'm on the curriculum committee. And the thing I liked about it is the diversity of individuals he had reviewing the books. And I think it's really, and I review them myself, and I think it's, they're well overdue.
I would just add that Dr. Ragor is also not able to be here tonight, but it was overwhelmingly supportive from the entire Curriculum Council. Ms. Laird Lewis was also an attendance board member, as well as a variety of senior office staff. So complete support for it.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. And speaking of Mrs. Laird Lewis, Mr. Murray reminded me that I didn't state at the beginning of the meeting, and I should have, that she was unable to attend as well this evening. So I just wanted to note that. 6.2. Three Wycomico County High School marching bands, James M. Bennett, Parkside, and Wycomico, recently qualified and competed at the state championship for the Maryland Marching Band Association. Each band has requested monetary support to assist with the expenses incurred. Is there a motion to approve a donation of $2,250, which equates to $750 per band, to assist with the travel expenses? So I see a motion by Mr. Fitzgerald, second by Mr. Murray. Any discussion? Is Dr. Bear here or no?
He's not, but I could share a little bit of information on his behalf.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. On behalf of Dr. Jeff Bear, our supervisor of fine arts, it's my pleasure to inform you that three of our high school bands competed in the Maryland State Championships for the newly-formed Maryland Marching Band Association. The competition was held at Towson University on October 23rd. Qualifying bands from the entire state were invited to compete in this championship event. In the open group for large bands, the Parkside High School Marching Rams placed second, and the JMB Marching Clippers placed third. The Wycomico High School Tribe Marching Band placed fourth in the Group 1A category. Additionally, Wy High won the Category Caption Award for Music Performance, JMB won for percussion, and Parkside won for the overall effect. These impressive scores and noteworthy results are the culmination of a demanding season of many qualifying competitions across the state of Maryland. The bands from JMB, Parkside, and Wy High continue to participate in fundraising activities in order to earn money to cover transportation costs and expenses related to producing a high-quality field show. On behalf of the bands, Dr. Bear would like to respectfully request a donation from the Wycomico County Board of Education to assist these ensembles with their travel expenses. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Briggs or discussion?
Comment. There used to be band boosters in the schools because I know Bennett used to sell coupons, because I bought one for a few years. But I haven't heard about any fundraisers with band boosters. Are these organizations still in the schools?
Yes. All three band programs have their boosters to support events just like this. Those boosters are still working hard to raise money, but they're still going to need some additional funds. And I would add that this is a traditional give by the Board of Ed.
We've done this every year, yeah. Yep. That's a good question, and it's, this is a no-brainer in my mind. If we can spend money to help the students and the bands, right? Okay, all those, assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's carried. Okay, 6.3. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve adjustments to the approved 2021-2022 Wycomico Public Schools' calendar?
Some move.
And I see a second from Mr. Fitzgerald. So discussion would just be from Dr. Hanlon.
I made my comments earlier, but I would just reiterate that the seven half-days that we are recommending putting in the calendar would begin on Tuesday, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And there would be one each month strategically placed on the calendar. Those dates would be announced within the next day or so, because we know parents need to plan. We appreciate parents' support of this initiative, because we have to take care of our teachers so that they can care for our students and be at their best.
Agreed. Any discussion or questions from the board? All right, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, carried. 6.4 is Personnel Matters for Information Only. So 7.1, we move to Board Members' Reports. So I'll start to my far left with Mr. Brown.
Okay, this past Saturday, I attended a dedication ceremony for Senator Paul S. Sarbanes, in which the Wycomico County Library branch downtown was renamed in his honor. And the reason why I mention this is that Senator Sarbanes is a product of the Wycomico County school system. Not only did he get his formal education here from, really from first grade on through high school, but he was also a Rhodes Scholar. He attended Oxford, as well as receiving degrees from Princeton and Harvard. And these are some of the most prestigious schools in the country. And it's kind of a testament to the caliber and kind of education when one applies himself, they can receive in Wycomico County. And it really is a testimony to the teachers and administrators here in Wycomico County that they do all that they possibly can to make sure that each student gets the best possible education that they can. And for him being a servant to our county and our state and the country is really a feather in the hat for Wycomico County and the public school system. Secondly, our Rotary Club is, we're going to be participating in a program called Warm Coats. And what we're going to be doing is providing winter coats for 135 students that attend Chipman Elementary School and West Salisbury Elementary School. And these are going to be brand-new coats. Kids will get to pick them out, and we're going to try to get this done by at least the first or second weekend in December. So it's going to be early Christmas for some of these kids. And for those of you who bought raffle tickets from the Rotary Club of Salisbury, some of the members, if you were not a winner, but you are a winner, because you're going to put the smiles on a lot of kids' faces when they receive these new coats. So we thank you, and come back again next year. Okay. The second thing is, third thing. Last year, we were not able to give out dictionaries like we normally do to the third graders. So we're planning to do that this year. Not only will we be giving them out to this year's third graders, but we're also going to backtrack. And so the students who are in now fourth grade will be receiving these. And I've received the books on last week, and our group and organization will be putting labels in them, and I'll be contacting the principals of the schools, and we'll be distributing those. And we're hopefully going to get those done, as we have done in the past around December. We'd like to get those things right around Christmas as well. It's pleasing to see the kids and how happy they are to get these books. I've been in touch with some of the principals, and I'll be in touch with the others in the days to come. And finally, I just want to say that I've talked to probably about two dozen students who are so happy to be back in school and enjoying themselves, irregardless of having to wear a mask. I talked to a couple of the high school kids who are on the Wycomico High School football team, and those kids are elated. They're on top of the world. And so I'd like to wish them the very best in their future games that they have to play. I think they haven't won this Friday, which they have to play with Stephen Nekater. Yeah, so good luck to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Suthowski?
First of all, I want to thank everyone here that accommodated me while I was on vacation with my family by making sure that I was connected to the three meetings that I was missing. But I did participate in the board meeting, the Curriculum Council, and the Policy Committee meeting while I was on vacation. So I want to thank everyone who worked in that. I attended the ribbon-cutting at Apple Drug, and I attended the Chamber of Commerce Award Luncheon, one of the nicest events that I believe I have attended in this community. People were upbeat, people were happy. We celebrated the accomplishments of many, many individuals in this community. And this is what makes Wycomico County and this community the great community that it is. However, I am extremely disappointed that 10 of our citizens who signed up to speak this evening did not. As a board member, I welcome community support. I'm known as one who does answer emails. I return phone calls. And I am disappointed that they decided not to come in and speak to us.
Thank you, Ms. Suthowski. Mr. Fitzgerald? Let me read that. Under Mr. Fitzgerald's board report, there's an MPSSAA rule about going online to get tickets to go to the games this weekend. I would like the board to try and change this at Wy High Stadium this weekend. This makes no sense, and it's at last minute. Mr. Murray?
Okay, thank you. And of course, I've said it before, and I'm not the last, but a lot of the things I've attended, it's been said, and they were all great, and I enjoy them. I'm going to go down my list, some of the things that have not been mentioned. As we move forward into a season of being thankful and giving thanks for things, I think, as mentioned, our students are very grateful and thankful, as well as myself and almost everyone, that they are back in school, and they're back in school five days a week. We're playing sports, we're doing things, and we're moving forward. And I applaud the adults, and particularly the students, that recognize that. We have followed state guidelines, and you have to follow certain state guidelines and things. And the sports is happening. I think we've even heard what is excellent to me is about our band competition. And I think that's a fantastic thing. And all of us, as community members, parents, board members, all of us need to keep supporting our students for things that they are doing in their activity. I also wanted to mention to our Extra Mile Award winners tonight, thank you for all the things that you've done to help our students, to help our schools and our community. My congratulations goes up, and of course, Mr. Butler, appreciate you taking care of that each month for us. We're moving forward in that. I did also attend the library dedication. And everything that Dr. Brown said about Paul Sarbanes, I did owe. And of course, with all the safety, with health issues, we're blessed in our county. One other thing I want to mention briefly is unfortunately of the episode that we're aware of that happened in our schools. We don't want it to happen, and we do everything. And Dr. Hanlon mentioned to share with your students, if you see something, say something about it. And keep in mind that when it happens, you can give out certain information at certain times, but you can't give out details and things all at one time. It comes in parts. But parents, I want you to know that it is the goal of everyone here to let you know just as soon as we can. And we are keeping the students safe as we can. And again, I answer all emails and phone calls. I had phone calls yesterday, and I did return them twice. And, you know, I always get back to people. And I'm hoping that in the future, that will continue with me when I get them. Thank you, and a happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. So I also attended the Chamber Awards, and I agree with Ms. Suthowski, it's a very nice event. We saw our own Dr. Hanlon present an award to the three college presidents, right? Mr. Murray and I attended a concert at Wy High that was very enjoyable one afternoon. That was very nice. I refted this year about 25 high school games, which was about 20 more than I'd promised to do. But I did enjoy it, keeps me thin. And I agree with Mr. Brown, every high school student I talked with was happy to be in school. And I can tell you, I've been doing it since 2016, and I've never seen a more polite, more engaged group of students. And there just weren't any issues at the games on the field with students. In soccer, you can give out a yellow for a warning or a red. I never even had to reach for that in my pocket. And it's unusual, really, in the heat of competition. But I think most of them were just happy that we're back playing again outside, and they didn't have to wear a mask while they played, like we did last spring. I think they just were enjoying life, and I know I was. So it keeps you young when you can hang out with those folks. Good luck to the Bennett boys, they're in the 3A Final Four of the state. I think Hannah Kinne mentioned that. And Ms. Giannelli from Parkside, the Parkside boys are in the 2A Final Four. So good luck to both of them this weekend, one win away from the state finals, which is amazing. So what I want to close with tonight is, continuing on Dr. Hanlon's theme about teacher morale particularly, I found this, it's not a quote, but it's some things that you can say to your child's teacher. And so I would encourage parents to write your child's teacher a note, email them. When you're in conferences with them, PTA, here's a few things you could say to the teacher. It's very easy to say, and it's not rocket science. So tonight, from the podium, I'm going to say it to all teachers. This is coming from me and from the board as a whole. Here's some things we'd like to tell you. Thank you. It's just a very simple thank you for what you do. We appreciate you. Your sacrifices don't go unnoticed. You made this easy to understand. Everyone has had a teacher that just made the subject easy to understand. My child wants to learn more about this, because they're enthusiastic about the subject that's being taught. You truly care about your students, which I know that applies to all our teachers. And I'm saying that to all of you right now. And finally, you're making a huge impact. You are. You've gotten through the COVID with the virtual. You educated the children through virtual education, and now you're back live in the classroom. And so you are making an impact, and we appreciate that. So last but not least, speaking of virtual education, I spent last week doing junior achievement, and I've shared my stories with you in the past. It really humbles you, and it makes you realize what a teacher does every day. And I say this every year, but it's true. Every day, I'm up at 5:00 anyway, but then I'm sitting at the kitchen table with these papers spread out, planning for just 45 minutes is all I have to do. And teachers do, I don't know how many minutes every day, for 180 days. And I do five days. And by the end of the week, you feel very fulfilled, and you've had a great time. But it wears you out, especially for a novice who doesn't know really what he's doing, but he's enjoying it. The students were very engaged, they're third-grade students at Delmar Elementary. They're very engaged. They knew how to put the zoom on, mute, off mute. They were even telling me how to share my screen. It was very... It was very... So I learned from them, and they do every time. So again, it was a great experience, and it makes you again realize, again, that theme about teachers, how hard their job is when it takes me all that time to prepare for 45 minutes in the daytime. So with that, I close my board report, and thank you all for watching and attending. And the meeting is adjourned.